Being and welcome to the November 19th, 2025 Special Town Board Legislative Meeting. Councilman Ockenden, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) (Inaudible)
Thank you, Bob. I'd like to call this meeting the order. Will the Clerk Sue please call the roll?
Lee, I'm sorry, Barry?
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Leenhout.
Here.
Ockenden.
Here.
Okay, we're gonna move things a little bit out of order tonight. We have special legislative meeting that we're gonna start with with some guests, move into public hearing and our public participation. We'll then pause the special legislative meeting and move into our work session. Once we conclude the work session, we'll reopen the special legislative meeting and see if there's any need to add some items to it. So, thank you for all being here. We have some special guests, the Penfield Explorers. So I want to welcome them here and have them come up. Let the captains start. Captains.
Good evening, guys. My name is Anna Perowski. I am the first captain of the Penfield-Webster Explorer Post. Next to me here is Anna John. She is our second captain. And our lieutenants, Camila Mendoza, who's right here, and then our second lieutenant cannot make it tonight. Her name is Jane Holmes, and she's our very, very special butter bars. I'd like to start by thanking our advisors, Boden, Mary, and Skip. Penfield Webster Explorer Posts would not run smoothly without them. Boden and Skip have taught us everything we need to know from assembling an oxygen tank to appropriately applying a KED and everything in between. With Boden and Skip teaching us these skills, we are able to teach new explorers what they taught us. A quote Boden told me once was from General Patton, "Never tell people how to do things. Tell them what to do, and they'll surprise you with your ingenuity." Boden uses his quote more times in a drill than I think even he realizes. And one of the times to prove this is normally on our drill days, we'll go up to Boden and say, "So, what are we doing today?" And he'll say, "I thought you guys were planning it." So it's these little lessons and little moments that we learn what it truly is like to be a leader of a post. We would jump into action quickly. I would be taking new explorers to teach them about their vital signs. Camila would take them to go do the primary assessments, and Jane and AJ would work on assembling oxygen tanks and using and administering airflow through a nasal cannula or a non-breather mask. My goal, and everybody else's goal, is to teach explorers how to confidently use their skills and abilities in the outside world. Most of our explorers want to be EMTs or paramedics, or others want to become doctors or nurses or PAs, and they want to get a feel of the medical field, or they want to get a feel of how to be an EMT to get their first step. And my personal goal as their captain is to make them feel confident in their skills, that they can do it in their sleeve. I would like to mention one of our explorers, Jane Holmes. She's our special butter bars, second in time. She received the Got the Doing the Right Thing Award at her swim meet. I remember Jane telling me that she was ready to dive off the board to start her race when she saw a man fall. Immediately going over to him, she realizes that she, even though he was unconscious, she started administering CPR. And then she started to tell adults and students alike how, what to do until the ambulance arrived. She says it's thanks to her time in the Explorer's Post and everything she learned that she was able to learn, able to do and administrate in the situation and saving the man's life. Of course, finding ways to learn EMS procedures and correct use of equipment is difficult to remember. Sometimes we have to compact lessons into the explorer's minds by making them repeat it multiple times. Not only can this be boring, but it can be frustrating and annoying for the person teaching the explorer and the explorer themselves. So finding ways to engage our explorers to learn these important lessons and have fun was difficult, difficult to figure out. With Boden, Skip, and Mary's help, we were able to make, we were able to make a couple ways to have fun while still learning the essential skills as an EMT. Some of our favorites is Tourniquet Hide and Seek. This game was created by one of our explorers, who is actually with us right now, and he is now an EM, he's not here with us today, he was supposed to be, but he's an EMT at AMR right now. His name is Tyler Kushner. In groups of two, an explorer would be blindfolded, and they would apply a KEG sticker to either their leg or their arm. And then they would hide through a room that is bent disassembled, and it's like a miniature obstacle course. The explorer's teammate, blindfolded, has to navigate themselves through the field while in the dark, in silence, to find their partner and then correctly administer the KED, or not the KD, the tourniquet. This game is supposed to make sure you learn, yes, you need to learn how to do it while you're asleep, because sometimes you can't see what you are, can't see your surroundings while you're on a call. So it's a teammate's job to find them, and then Boden and Skip would come around and make sure we properly applied them. Another fun game we made up is the stairchair race. Now, any EMS person in this room is probably looking at me right now and saying, "Why are you racing up and downstairs with a stairchair?" Actually, we don't run up and downstairs. We actually don't use the stairs at all. This is supposed to help the explorer work on applying seatbelt correctly, because it's similar to how you apply it on a gurney. What would happen is an explorer would sit on the floor, and then in teams, they would get the explorer up into the stairchair, correctly apply their seatbelt, and then race him across the parking lot. And this might not seem like much, but hidden inside this game is that the groups can work together to learn each other's strengths and weaknesses. To beat everyone else, the explorers need to know who are the strongest people to lift the patient onto the stairchair. They need to know who's the fastest so they can, fastest to apply the seatbelt, so they can get them on, strap them correctly, because we do not want people to get hurt, and to need to know who the fastest runner is to get them across the parking lot the fastest. Some of our drills are reenactment drills. We call these SIM day. These drills put all of our explorer's skills to the test, because in the field, you never know what is going to be thrown at you. One day, we might do a car evacuation drill, or six 16-year-old girl throwing up on the floor. Sometimes we might get a simulation that started out easy, but can change drastically. Sometimes we would like to pull little pranks on everybody and drastically change it by pulling out a Nerf gun. Those things you need to learn. It's very, very important for an explorer to know when it is okay to go in and when you have to back out. Doing all these fun drills can't be done with only five or six people showing up. So one of our first priorities, priorities as AJ and I became captains, was to get more explorers, and how would we do that? Through an officers' meeting, we figured out that Boden set up a Facebook page, which was completely outdated. So, and Boden rarely ever posts on it. So we thought, how could we get teenagers who are never on Facebook, no offense, who is never on Facebook, to come into our posts and check out what it is? And realized, social media is the best way to get people to know who we are. So we set up an Instagram account, closely monitored by Boden and everybody else in the Penfield Webster Ambulance, and we would post pictures of what we will do. That is actually how we've got a couple of our explorers. People get the opportunity to see what our drills are like just by the pictures, and if they're interested, they'll come over. We have information on our Instagram page for explorers to come down to us and see what it's like. Our attendance at our post has skyrocketed since then. We have 10 to 15 explorers on average every drill. Another way we go out into the community is by teaching scout troops. Scout troops, this is actually how I found out about the post, through my girl's scout troop when, four years ago. Boden would plan with scout leaders, figuring out a day that would be the best for us explorers to show up and give a good turnout. Most of the time, we just teach basic first aid or splinting and bandaging. We have also gone to the Ontario Rod and Gun Club and helped Boden teach a Stop the Bleed class. Parades is another favorite for explorers to participate in, and we hold the first place win at the Parade of Lights in Webster for the past five years in a row for the best ambulance. And this year, we're gonna be having a fun competition between the staff at Penfield Webster and the explorers to see who can make the most decorative ambulance and bring home the trophy. Either way, it comes back to Penfield, but the explorers kind of want the gloating rights. We love finding ways to help throughout our community. We like helping kids down from simulation buildings at the fire department open houses. That's actually personally one of my favorites. We love having the opportunity to show interested young children what the inside of an ambulance looks like, especially when they sit on the front seat, and they think they can drive away and fly the lights, even though they can't. Also, we save the taxpayers money when we do step forward and help out in the ways that others can't. Because most kids who come out to this post become EMTs and paramedics. Already this spring semester at Monroe Community College, four of our explorers, including myself, are participating in the MCC EMT course in second semester in January. And numerous have already finished their course and are now working as an EMT or paramedic at different agencies, and I'm aware of three. There might be more, but I'm aware of three. And actually, two right here, next to me, Camila and AJ, are in it or already completed their EMS course. For the years to come, we plan on making our post bigger and better every drill. My goal will always be to help my friends at the Penfield Webster Explorer Post become better and more knowledgeable and confident in their skills. Because not only am I helping teach explorers, they're also teaching me how to become a better leader, to become a better friend. My time at the post is shaping and strengthening my ethos and creating the most rewarding and memorable experiences I would cherish for the rest of my life. And I hope that everybody else that I interact with my post would also agree with me. Thank you, Penfield Webster Emergency Ambulance, for giving kids like me the opportunity to explore in the field of EMS.
Thank you. That's awesome. Did I hear Boden, you're getting social media savvy? Is that what I caught? No?
(Inaudible)
Well, I have to, I know we gotta do a group picture, which is what we normally do, but I want to recognize Jack, and I think, Jack, you probably were at every Penfield event this year, almost every concert I'd see him. So kudos to Jack. And I also want to mention that PVA, which I'm a little biased, you know, the best EMS service in the county, I think I can say that here and be, be okay. You all trained, I want to say it was like 25 staff members in CPR, AED, and first aid in general. And I hadn't done that in 10 years, but it was really cool, and I just recommend everyone to do that. You never know when you're in that situation. So, just want to throw that out there. All right, Chris, what do you want us to do? Picture? All right.
They have pizza to eat, so they're in a hurry.
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible)
So if I can have everybody just picture from, so Linda, I can have you step in, Kevin, and sorry, I don't know your name. Mary, if I can have you take a step in as well.
One more step, sorry.
And Kevin and Mary, one more step. And you're good. Go. All right. All right. I'm in, or take three of them. So do one, two, three, ready, smile. Two more. One, two, three. And last one. One, two, and three. Thank you, guys, for coming.
Thank you.
Did you email me that picture?
Yes, no problem.
I'll give you a chance. You can hang out. It's fun, if you want to hang out another hour.
I heard they had pizza.
Yeah, pizza with.
Yeah. Good job. Thank you.
See you, Jack. Drive safe, everybody.
Wish I could. I run a 24-hour office, and going back in, it'll lock.
Have a good night. Okay.
Stay safe.
All right, so we have a few communications, and I'll start with our Clerk Sue, please.
The Penfield Ecumenical Food Shelf located at 1618 Jackson Road is preparing for the Thanksgiving distribution on November 22nd and Christmas distribution on December 20th to more than 260 families. They provide supplies to make a complete holiday dinner. For more information or to donate a turkey or other item, please visit penfieldecumenicalfoodshelf.com or call 234-0799. Also, mark your calendar for the Town of Penfield Menorah Lighting Event at Shuffel Burger Park in the Four Corners of Penfield on Monday, December 15th at 5:30. For more information, contact Town Clerk Amy Steckloff at 340-8629.
Thank you. And a couple more. Candace?
Winter parking restrictions are now in effect until April 1st. Please do not park on, on-street parking between the hours of 2:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m. This goes for all roads, shoulders, including highways in the Town of Penfield.
Perfect. Kevin?
In observance of the Thanksgiving holiday, Town of Penfield offices will be closed on Thursday, November 27th, and Friday, November 28th, with an early closure at 12:00 p.m. on Wednesday, November 26th. The Penfield Public Library will also have an early closure on Wednesday, November 26th at 2:00 p.m. The library will be closed on Thursday, November 27th, but will have normal business hours on Friday, November 28th. On behalf of all of us at the town, we wish our residents a safe and happy Thanksgiving holiday.
Thanks, Kevin. And Linda, I think you have one?
Beginning Wednesday, December 3rd, reservations for the Town of Penfield's 2026 lodges and shelters will be open to Penfield residents. Individuals or groups wishing to reserve a facility must be at least 21 years of age. Registration requirements can be completed by visiting the town's recreation office on Baird Road or by going online to penfield.org/parks. Fees do apply for use of these facilities. Residents are encouraged to secure their preferred dates early and may visit the website for additional information about each of the town's lodges and shelters.
Thank you. Sorry, Bob, there's nothing left for us. Sorry about that. So we have a public hearing coming up to consider a special permit for a plumbing business at 1419 Empire Boulevard, but I'll start with, with Carrie giving an overview.
Sure. For this, in the La Salle's Landing District, any new changes in occupancy of existing buildings do, does require a new special use permit to be issued. Colin the plumber is here. There's no physical change to the site, no external changes. It was an office prior, and it was a similar use. So the public hearing, there's no way in this district, there's no administrative avenue for these changes of use, and so here tonight for the public hearing to consider that. The applicant is with us, but because the application was a fairly straightforward one, I offered to give the overview and save him the trip of coming up to the desk, but he's certainly here and able to answer questions if any arise with the public hearing.
Thank you. And I'll have the clerk officially call this public hearing started, but I'll just remind everyone, there is public participation. If you want to speak, it's just related to this public hearing.
To consider a special permit for plumbing business at 1419 Empire Boulevard, said notice was published in the Webster Herald on November 5th. On the town website and town clerk's bulletin board, 10 postcards were mailed.
Okay. Anybody sign up for the public hearing? No? Okay, well, that was, yeah.
I want to comment, just to make sure everybody's aware. When we discussed this in a prior work session, the key component of this business is it's not going to create a lot of traffic. It's not a customer base where people are coming in, because I know we all have concerns about Empire, but I thought that was important for everyone to be aware of.
Yes, this is, this is, the only folks who are coming to and from this particular site are the employees, and they generally arrive in the morning to get their trucks and equipment, and then head out for the day and don't return until it's time to punch a clock and go home. So not a high-traffic generator.
Right.
And the Collins starts them early, and they have to work late, so you'll never see them on the road.
(Inaudible).
Okay, seeing no one signed up, I think we can call this public hearing closed. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll move on to public participation. Anybody signed up? Yeah?
Yes. Sarah Jane Dysoner, Willowhurst.
And then I have one email. Don't let me forget, and I'll read it. Yeah. Yeah, go ahead. Sorry.
(Inaudible).
How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Just state your name and address, and then you can do your thing.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Just have to pull up one thing. Hello, thank you. My name is Sarah Jane Dysoner. I am a resident of 8 Willowhurst Drive, which is the neighborhood between Baird and 441 down to Wayland. I'm going to refer to my, my prepared speech as I am a representative of a larger group. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Sarah Jane, and I'm a resident of Penfield Gardens neighborhood, located between Baird, across from the library, down 441, and backing up to Harris Hill, Wayland Park. I am here today as a representative of our neighborhood to ask for your support in placing a four-way stop sign at the intersection of Brentwood Drive and Willowhurst. Our neighborhood is requesting the stop sign to help slow traffic and create a safer environment for children, walkers, dog owners, the high school track team, the Harris Hill bike bus, and everyday drivers. There are over 25 children just on Brentwood and Willowhurst. What makes this intersection particularly dangerous is a lack of visibility at the corner. Cars, cars and pedestrians must inch into the middle of the intersection to see around the bushes, which I estimate to be about 16 feet. They're probably taller than that. I'm really bad, but they're much, much higher than I am. These bushes form a solid wall around the Brentwood and Willowhurst intersection, completely blocking the view of oncoming traffic. So it's completely taking up the entire corner. It is genuinely nerve-wracking to have to pull your car into the intersection just to check if somebody is coming. I truly cannot stress how full these bushes are. We do have other neighbors in the neighborhood that have these same bushes at the intersection of Ludlow, and they are low. They do meet the three-feet requirements of the town, and you are able to see around them with no issues. I do raise a question, if a four-foot fence that sits 53 feet off the road required a variance, speaking from experience, how is a 16-foot wall of bushes at the corner permissible? In the five years I've lived there, I've lost track of how many near accidents I've witnessed. Just this summer, a little boy on a bike was almost struck by a van. I'm sorry. Neither of these individuals saw each other. I've personally had to push my own children into the bushes to avoid being hit by a car that was going faster than the permissible 25 miles an hour. And even that, in a neighborhood, is really fast. I've watched a driver turn the corner so quickly, they drove up on the grass, and there have been, there's even been a fatal car accident at that intersection, a loss of life, not just an injury. While cutting the bushes down to code would help enormously, our concern is that the property owners may not be able to maintain the trimming. They are already unable to remove the dead trees off their property that routinely, routinely take down the line, the power lines during a windstorm. As for the speed, Brentwood is frequently used as a cut-through by drivers trying to avoid the traffic on 441 and Baird. Or they're heading to the community center or the high school. It also becomes a bypass during accidents on 441. While stop signs are not primarily intended as a speed-control device, installing one would require drivers to pause, look, and acknowledge their surroundings instead of flying through the neighborhood. These are only my personal experiences, but I'm speaking on behalf of many neighbors who share the same concerns. We do have a Facebook page. Here is just one example. I live on Brentwood, just beyond the intersection in question, and I see near misses between cars and pedestrians every week. The .5-mile straightaway from Hillary invites excessive speeding. There is no place to slow vehicles down. I have two young children and love playing with friends throughout the neighborhood, and the intersection is my greatest concern. Installing a stop sign here and ensuring consistent visibility isn't just about the traffic, it's about protecting our children. Everyday, school-aged kids walk these streets, trusting adults around them to keep them safe. A simple stop sign slows cars, prevents accidents, and gives family peace of mind. Our kids deserve nothing less. Tonight, we ask that you consider our request and take action. We have also created a petition to show the strong support from the community. We understand this is not the first time residents have asked of this from, in our development, for a four-way stop sign. The estimated cost is about $1,000, including signs and labor, if you have the opportunity to greatly enhance the safety for our entire neighborhood. I do have other examples. I'm not going to share them, but I do thank you for your time, your attention, and your commitment to the Penfield community. This is a wonderful place to live, and my family feels very fortunate to call it home. We hope you'll keep us all safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just kidding. Has this gone in front of the Transportation Committee? Would it, would that make?
It did. So we just discussed it last night. I did speak with Sarah Jane on the phone earlier today. It just came to Transportation last night. The DPW has gone out and done some preliminary trimming, but based on the amount of trimming they can do before they actually damage the shrub, they didn't go beyond that. The engineering department still has to go out and do some site distance evaluations, so the Transportation Committee heard it last night. It was tabled. We've got some more information to collect. We've got to go out and do the site distance analysis for it, following our standard procedures, but, you know, we will come back with a recommendation of the Town Board on either remove the shrubs, install a stop sign, you know, so that would be forthcoming at a future, future meeting.
Mark, are the shrubs in the right of way?
It appears so. We may have to go out and do some survey, and, you know, they may be, they're, these ones in particular, we've also looked at Kenmont, as I'm looking at Council, or Councilperson Ockenden. We looked at that one as well. We may have to do some survey to see if they're on the property line, near the property line. Clearly, they've grown into the right of way, but where the actual tree itself sits, but based on the size of them, you'd kind of have to scalp, you know, one, they didn't trim off the top. They trimmed off the sides, trying to clear site distance a little bit, but the amount of trimming you got to do based on the size, the age, more than likely, you may kill the plant. So, you know, that's something we're looking at, is it'll be a recommendation, come back to the Board, is to remove the vegetation if it's in the right of way. Obviously, that's going to upset the homeowner that's there, using it for some buffering. I think Carrie's pulling up some pictures. You can see they're sizable shrubs. They're using them as buffering for their home. We get that, but it's creating some site distance issues for obviously the driving public.
That, I know Google's only updated so much. How, is that representative? Can you see it? Sorry. Are they higher now? Are they, how representative?
So that's pretty good. The angle coming down, it's almost looking down, so it almost makes it look a little smaller. The, the sightline in question is coming from the back of Brentwood down to 441, and then coming across Willowhurst, and that's, I mean, you really have to go into the intersection to see around them.
Drive back to the intersection, is the...
Yeah. It looks like, so right now, there is a stop sign on Willowhurst. Is that accurate?
There is.
And you're looking at a four-way?
Yes, but we're asking for a four-way, because if you, even if you trim the bushes, I don't think the homeowners will maintain them based on their age and capabilities. So that's kind of where we're like, well, we have to ask for that. But it's, they're, they're tall. You really can't see around them. I also like to point out, what you can't see in the pictures, is it's overtaking a fire hydrant. So if, God forbid, there was an emergency, the firemen would have to, so it's on the corner of Willowhurst, on the Willowhurst side.
To that first picture, I think there's...
So while you can get to it, it's definitely, it's not to code, and it's, it definitely would take maybe the firefighters a couple extra, a little bit, to get to it, to then take care of, of the house and preventing further damage.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, we'll keep you in the loop, absolutely.
I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, I have one online.
Sarah Jane, you guys submitted the petition too, right? That was, that we've already received.
Okay, this is from Naomi, 2105 Five Mile Line Road. "There needs to be a stop sign where people exit on Liberty Street from the section that houses Mark Pizzeria, Starbucks, Dunkin', the bank, and Small Plaza. Every morning, I'm sitting to turn left off, out of my parking lot that houses the Dennis Bangs and my apartment house, and cars will come flying out of the other lot without even looking, and there's too much traffic coming from there now. I sit and have to wait for all them to exit before I can pull out, because none look. This morning, I sat and let two cars go in, one was coming, so I had, so I am about to pull out, and all of a sudden, someone flies up and turns right without looking. There's a daily occurrence and an accident waiting to happen. Maybe I can send that to the Transportation Committee."
Yeah, if you can just pass that along.
Yeah, I'll do that.
(Inaudible) take a look.
Where was that stop? Liberty and Highland?
Liberty...
I think it might be asking, forgive me if I'm misunderstanding, it might be asking for a stop sign exiting the back end exit out of like where Starbucks is.
Oh, understand.
Onto Liberty. If there's not a, a stop sign on the, on the private property as you go to exit onto the street, people may be rolling through, and if there's, if it's clear... the street, people may be rolling through, and if there's, if it's clear, they may not be stopping to look.
And I'll send it to you, Mark, and you can follow up with the resident.
And I'll apologize in advance to the Transportation Committee if I did not characterize that accurately, out loud.
Duly noted, for the record.
We'll track it down and clarify, just to make sure.
Okay, thanks, Mark.
Yep.
All right, anything else I missed, Sue? Public participation? Okay, we're now going to end our, or pause our special ledge, I would say, and we're going to move right on to our, our work session, Wednesday, November 19th, work session of the Penfield Town Board, like to call this work session meeting in order. And yes, we have to call the roll again, I believe, Sue.
Barry.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Leenhouse.
Here.
Ockenden.
Here.
Tecklisch.
Here.
Thank you, Sue. First item is approval of the minutes, everybody get a chance to look. Any discussion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
All right, thanks, Bob.
I'll second.
Thanks, Kevin. All right, vote please, Sue.
Barry.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Leenhouse.
Aye.
Ockenden.
Aye.
Tecklisch.
Aye.
Okay, we have a number of action items, and we'll start with the permitting software. I think that goes to you, Carrie.
It's going to, to Mark, and I'll take this one. Actually, Alan Wright's was really the leader of the band on this, and he unfortunately had a conflict this evening, so Mark and I offered to do his honors. So as the Town Board is aware, the town issued an RFP for vendors that can provide cloud-based software for permitting and project management. And permitting also includes code enforcement and other functions in the Building and Zoning Department, as well as maintaining the records associated with applications to the Town Board, Planning Board, and the Zoning Board of Appeals, as well as, I believe it's also used potentially for Historic Preservation Board applications. If it's not, it's going to be. And so, the RFP was issued, the town received 18 responses, that was whittled down to five top vendors to conduct interviews with and go through demonstrations. And so, the, after navigating that process, the town, the town staff has a recommendation, and I'll share the summary, in the folder, we provided the, the proposals that were submitted by the top five vendors that were interviewed. Several were very, very qualified. GovWell was by and far the unanimous selection for, and it, and the committee that reviewed included representation from all three of the primary departments that are going to utilize this software. And I think a couple of things that really helped them stand out is their customer service platform and, and service for the program is offered both for town staff, but also for the customer and the user. So it's going, it's very user-friendly, and to the extent that somebody has a question, they have folks that answer questions either through live chat or through telephone, online. And so, a lot of functionality, a lot of ability to make things much more efficient between the departments, particularly projects or applications that involve more than one department, or involved a transfer from the planning or zoning board onto the engineering department or, or the building department. So very smooth workflow, much, very automated, online application abilities, just to, and there were other ones that were, that were very good as well, but this one for sure was the, the standout.
Yeah, this one had some new AI tools integrated into it, as people submit new plans and applications, the AI would go through and say, it doesn't have a scale bar, bounce, doesn't have a north arrow, so it could do some of the preliminary kind of culling, you know, before it even gets to us. We thought that, you know, so that was nice, it has a nice mobile app, it's used in the field, they've got live-in-field inspections, you can even have an applicant, you know, if they had to put in a silt fence, they could go out in the field, you can see through their phone, they can hold up and say, yep, I've got my silt fence in, if it's something that simple. You can take a picture through their phone or their tablet of whatever's going on, just to verify if it was something that straightforward of an inspection, and then you could, you know, close it out.
It reminds me, other towns have used this, I mean, I know.
The town of Perrington is the most recent local one that's implemented it. Just talked to them the other day, they're very happy with it, so I think they're about six months in. They're not the only firm, they've got people, GovWell standardizes around towns our size. There's a lot of the other companies that are much larger and serve cities. So wonderful software, it just didn't seem to us, in our group, right-sized for what, you know, Penfield's needs are and what, you know, what we do best. This, this company seems to kind of center around small-town government, and, you know, has a lot of the functionality that, you know, we've been looking for, and.
And I, sorry, I may have asked this, too. I think it's budgeted, but I, I don't know the budget amount exactly.
There was some allocated funds for permitting in there. I don't know the exact amount of that, but there was some stuff that was put in the budget. We've been talking about this, you know, for some time, and then, you know, when Alan, again, took the omen's task of going out, and we've met with all of them several times, they did, you know, all of them did initial demonstrations, went through those, and then they even, we've toured other towns, we went to Perrington to see theirs, we've gone to other towns to, you know, see what, you know, software they use. And then, when the RFP went out, you know, 18 companies responded, which was well more than what we had originally even looked at, brought some new ones to our attention that were interesting, and they had some good features as well, sat through their presentations, went through their, you know, demonstrations as well. But GovWell, you know, kind of stuck out to all of us, so from Building Department to Planning and Engineering, Code Enforcement, and then it'll even, you know, work for, you know, DPW, and could, you know, be implemented in the Clerk's Office and other departments as well.
Okay, anybody questions?
Could this be used by, so like Planning and Building Department, would this also be used by like the zoning board and the planning board?
Yes.
Like as a way to share plans amongst the board members, or?
It can, and it actually has a built-in plan review, and then you can compare the first iteration to subsequent plans, and it'll point out for you what's changed on the plan, and it'll highlight the places where, so it'll, it'll streamline a couple of things. One, it is it'll cut down on, it'll help people understand what they need to submit, it'll save staff time, a lot of times, we're having to answer 14 phone calls to help navigate one application. This is going to streamline that process for the user, make it a lot more friendly for them, and then for in-house, multiple people can be looking at the same plan at the same time from multiple vantage points. So instead of a plan having to go from one engineer to the next, or from one department to the next, it will be looked at simultaneously. So review times are significantly reduced as well.
And it automates a lot of things, so once the application is submitted, it's deemed complete, they'll get an automatic letter back or an email back saying your application has been received by the town. Takes one last task away from the town to, to do that, but it's tracked in the system. You can go in the system and see every communication back and forth, so if a question ever comes up, all of that is documented by the program. You know, we send stuff off to them, but automatically, you know, sends a letter off, and, you know, so it would automate a lot of the, the normal just emails back and forth and documentation on, on our end that happens today.
And don't we need to upgrade anyways, because I, we're no longer going to be using IPS, isn't that right?
Well, IPS doesn't, doesn't offer cloud-based software, they don't offer online, they, unfortunately, they haven't updated.
It's like a next-generation.
IPS doesn't have spell check.
They don't have spell check. We've been asking for 20 years.
Any of these software companies, we would love any of them, they would be a huge improvement.
Well, and it allows our customers, I think, to access the system and submit applications right. And then, one thing, Linda, I think we were going down the road at one point with Tyler, but, but this is sort of the better, better option, I guess.
For our group, yes, I don't know if everybody, every department is there, but I know for at least the majority of the, the upstairs group, I don't know, and I don't want to speak for.
Any other department.
Any other department, but I know Historic Board, Zoning Board, Building Department, Planning Department, Engineering, DPW said in on these, and we were happy with it, I don't know if it works.
Okay, yeah, Carla has one, too.
So let's, let's talk about the costs, the initial term. Annual costs. I'm going to assume that includes changes, modifications, do they, provide me a little more detail on what those cover, and what those costs are for.
Yep, so that, that initial cost would be the conversion from IPS, so bringing over our data that's currently there, that's obviously historical.
And the timeline for that is?
Each company was different, so I think, and I'm turning back where GovWell's was, it's like three to six months, between, I think, them bringing the data over, training for staff, so that includes training for all the staff to get us up on it, and then they kind of phase in departments. You could do the Building Department first, get them in, kind of get them settled, and then you could, you know, phase to Code Enforcement, and then Planning and Engineering.
I think we, borrowing from what Perrington indicated, they think they started with Code Enforcement.
I think so.
And made sure that op, was operating, then, then activated the next module for building permits, got that acclimated, then they, so they sort of systematically, so that each module was sort of rolled out. They're building the whole system, so everything interplays with each other, but rolled it out publicly in a sort of more manageable way.
Okay. Did they say it includes digitization of it?
Yes.
Cleanup?
Yep.
Does it scrub the data, and it provides output that's like, hey, we need you to explain this or anything like that?
And the town of Perrington also has IPS currently, so they've been through that before, they've done it with other companies, and they seem satisfied with, you know, bringing that, that data into this database, so we don't lose the history.
Right, right.
And that's included in the costs? Yes.
That's in that initial term startup, and then the rest is, is maintenance cost thereafter. Sorry to keep cutting off, we were, IPS, and sorry, I didn't keep talking badly about them, but we've not seen an update since we've had it for the past 10 years.
Right.
They're showing quarterly, every couple of weeks, and they said even in December, here's some stuff we've got rolled out. So they've, you know, seem like they've got regular upgrades, and here's some new stuff we've got, here's some more AI features we're incorporating in it, here's the, you know, plan review feature that's already incorporated into, you know, our software.
And when they configure, bring that legacy data over and configure it, is it available so that if you need to look up something?
Yep.
Yes.
From four years ago?
Yep, so we look up a parcel and address, this would pull that history from that parcel, and we can see the past history of approvals and permits that were issued and everything else.
Okay, and the ongoing costs?
That's going to include the system, the continuation of the, the, every update that's available would be available to the program, so that we're not having to pay extra.
You'd get the automatic upgrades each time a new system, new thing rolls out, is included in that?
It's the training, and then it's the 24-hour, like the non-stop customer service, and I think one of the things that was really impressive is the, the around-the-clock assistance, so that the, it, they can get responses and information to users. So if I'm filling out an application at 10 o'clock at night.
On a Saturday.
Or on a Saturday, I don't have to depend on a staff member in the town hall being available to answer a question, the system's going to have in built-in answers and responses. That'll help.
That's through their AI tool?
Yeah.
Yep, and that was, they were unique in that no one else had a.
A chat.
Customer service for the public side, staff side, but that was the only one that if you went in and said, hey, I'm having an issue filling out this form, you know, obviously they don't know that the town's code, I mean, it's integrated, and it samples from that, but they wouldn't be advising them on town code stuff, just how to use the software.
Real customer service or AI customer?
Both. I think they have, they have some.
They have a chat, so there's, you can go into the chat, and the AI actually would pull up data from that, saying, what's a side setback for a shed? It could pull from our code, so they're linked into Ecode 360, which we have, it could look in and say it's a 10-foot side setback, and, you know, so they could answer some of the questions. So I know Perrington said they went from about 50 calls a week to five, is what they're seeing, so it's reduced a lot of just basic questions that people call in and ask about, do I need a permit for a fence? Do I need, you know, when it pulls from our code, and would give them.
And then there was a call center available as well during certain hours, I think, that would answer a phone call for somebody who was calling in as a customer, like as a user.
Okay.
And then one of the questions we asked is, obviously, the data at the end of it, it's ours, if we decide we no longer want to be with them, we want to go somewhere else, that's our, still our data, we don't lose control of that information.
So cloud-based?
Yes.
Who's the host, do you know?
Okay, so either it's going to be AWS.
Okay.
Or, and I have to remember, because we, they start to all blend together.
They're five different groups.
And, and did they talk about in the, and we don't have to go, I can read this later, but they, they talk about outage recovery, if they lose, where is the data backed up? What is their downtime, what's there, et cetera?
I think across the board, they all had multi-level sort of security, and there was, I think, and forgive me, I apologize, but I know they all had like a fail-safe to have like a backup.
Yeah, so, so they do, so beginning page 17 of their response, right?
I have not read through it, so, go ahead.
Platform is, is hosted by Microsoft Azure, and they have data recovery there and cybersecurity that goes on.
Thank you.
Yep.
So is there about using AWS?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and now we, we don't have to.
Yeah, we're not, we're not looking for a board decision tonight, you know, that's why I'd say we wanted to discuss it, give the board some time, if, you know, we're good with it. You know, obviously, we moved forward with a resolution for possibly December 3rd, but, you know, give the board some time to have some soak time, and I ask additional questions, and we can, you know, follow up.
Are we still paying for IP, was that an annual for IPS?
We still are, yes, and we would keep that active until, obviously, we get all our data transferred over to make sure, you know, we don't lose anything, they don't just shut us off, so.
I'm sorry, can you just clarify, for, is, you buy the program, it's got all the modules, you pay for all of it, and you use what you want, or are you paying for specific modules that you say this is?
It comes all as one, one package, so you can use what you want, and if you use it all, great, if you don't, some towns, you know, have different things, they've even got a lot of GIS-based things, so if we look at, inspectors got to go out and do an inspection, they'll map it all out, so it could help, hey, let's go here, here, and here is a better path for the day than jumping all over town. They have options, they set it up on the GIS, we have it open to the public, that they could look at all the data on the website, you can turn it on, you can turn it off, you know, so there's different options we could set up on, on a public-facing forum, you could look up and say, what's going on at 3100 Atlantic Avenue, and you could see, you know, the history if you wanted to make all of that available, or some limited.
So the real advantage is to utilize all of it?
Yeah, I mean, as much as you can use, obviously, the better for, for all of us, and it also integrates between departments, I mean.
I think that's the biggest issue.
Nowadays, we're not done with our site plan review, and I'm waving my hands and calling the Building Department saying, don't issue a building permit. Here in the system, I can put a hold on the system, anybody in the Building Department opens it up, and it's flashing at them saying, don't issue the building permit, they haven't finished their planning board application, they haven't completed their easements. Today, we, you know, pick up the phone, or, you know, try to wave at somebody, catch somebody, so things don't go through, when people submit their building permit, and they, oh, we issued that already, and, you know, so that relies on human, you know, back and forth, this, they've got some, you know, elements in here, you can put a hold on a parcel and say, they haven't completed this, they have a violation, and then all the departments can see that, so it'll be much more streamlined between the departments as well.
Thank you.
Sure.
The sales landing for construction contracts?
With the, I'm sorry, Mark, with the RFP, when do you need action by? Because I'm assuming, you know, I, I looked at least with Open Gov with the recommendation, right? There is a migration period, so even if you sign the user agreement 1-1, it doesn't necessarily mean, Kevin, that you'll have it 1-1, right? So.
There's some migration, I mean, we'd like to, before the end of the year, and as we've got other items on budget stuff, just so we can encumber money into next year, so we had some monies into the budget this year, and that's why we've got many items we want to talk about tonight, is if we can take action before the end of the year to sign contracts, complete resolutions, then we can go back to finance and say, hey, this is under contract, we'd like to encumber the money to next year, it was in this year's budget, we don't want it to, to lose it, we can carry it over. So that's why many of these items, we just like to wrap them up, you know, in this calendar year, have contracts in place, we can encumber the money, you know, and then make sure it's available for use next year.
So I guess I'm like, you know, really looking to you both, we have one legislative session scheduled for December. I know we can always call one, but would like to avoid any scheduling over the holidays. So, I mean, I've reviewed, I'm comfortable moving forward. I don't know if, Linda, I don't know if you wanted to.
I have not.
Okay, so we're not ready to move forward tonight, then?
Do we have that written up, that resolution?
I mean, we didn't have a resolution ready for tonight.
No, but to prepare the resolution for the legislative session.
Prepare one for.
I would be okay with you preparing the resolution, and if for some reason, I don't believe I'm going to see anything, but I don't have any issue preparing the resolution.
Reach out between now and then, or Alan is kind of in the lead on it, but we can start a resolution for December 3rd.
Great.
Borrowing any, you know, major concerns from the board.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right.
How do you guys feel?
Yeah, no.
Okay, then I'm going to ask that, I'm going to make a motion for a resolution to be prepared to award the contract to GovWell, please, for permitting software.
I'll second that.
Vote, Barry?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Leanhouse?
Aye.
Ackenden?
Aye.
Taglish?
Aye.
All aye.
Okay, you're up, Carrie again, I think, and Mark.
Well, this is, Mark and I, our last names trade places for the next couple, but, so as you know, on November 7th, the bid opening for the La Salle's Landing Comfort Station was held. Because of the value of the construction, it's subject to Wicks Law, which requires four separate contracts. You needed general trades, HVAC, plumbing, and electrical. In the folder, there was the bid tab results by contract, so contract one is general construction. The highlighted low bid is shown. For the general contractor, the general trades contract, there was two alternatives included in the bid request. One to add epoxy floor finish and another to, for them to include the purchase and installation of the picnic tables on the exterior. I think in reviewing this, the staff feel that it's not necessary to move forward with those alternates. We would just look to go with the total amount base bid plus the allowance. For the, for contract number two, which is plumbing, the low bid was Delta Monic, and forgive me, I think it's Delta Monics LLC. I will point out that MRB Group, who did the design for the project and assisted us with bidding, has gone through and reviewed all of the qualifications, has interviewed two of the low bidders because they were new to them and wanted to ensure they had the experience and there's no issues in recommending the award. They did review Delta Monics and there was no issues, good experience, good references that were provided for the contractor. Low bid for contract number three is Tactical Construction LLC, no issues there. They've experienced with them on their project and we're very confident in their ability to perform the HVAC services associated with the La Salle's Landing bathroom. Contract number four was Electrical, Finger Lakes Electric. They're a newer company, but the service providers are from a very well-known electric company. They've just spun off into their own entity. I will point out that all said and done, as a total, the total contract actually comes in a little bit lower than the estimate for construction that was prepared at the 95% construction phase by MRB. So under budget, still, you know, it's a, which is always a good thing because you never know how these are going to shake out. So not, without incorporating the low bidder with the alternates for the contract number one, the bid does come in just below what was anticipated for construction with contingency.
Great.
So if the town, we'd be looking for permission to prepare resolutions to award each of those contracts. As we've done in other projects where there's multiple contracts, each resolution would handle each contract one, two, and three, and four.
I mean, there is a lot of proposals there. I mean, I'm really relying on the staff recommendations as well as the expert consult of MRB at this point. I tried to read the EC bid and the HVAC and kind of got lost, so.
For most of this stuff, for these type of contracts, you're really.
They're hyper-technical.
You're required to award it to the lowest responsible bidder, and so that's what the MRB would be looking to make sure that all the specs are met, and then really it's, you got to look at the bottom-line number and, you know, unless there's something that, where they're not meeting the criteria to show that they're a responsible bidder.
Right.
Really, you know, to award it to the lowest.
Again, it's hyper-technical. Light on the vetting internally first and then the MRB, like you said, for the specs, so.
Yeah.
Were there any other concerns? I think this one's pretty straightforward.
Okay.
Linda, you look like you're considering.
I'm just reading, yeah, through it. Okay, so right now, contractor one, lowest bidder. MRB will review it to make sure everything's in.
And they reviewed, they've already reviewed, yes.
They've already reviewed it and they said yes.
Yes.
All things being equal, this is the lowest.
Yes.
Okay.
And they requested the qualifications from all of the low bid contractors. They did specifically reach out to both the electrical contract and the plumbing contractor because they were new to them. They hadn't worked with them before and they hadn't bid on other projects. So they want to do their own due diligence to make sure that there were no issues. Both verified their ability to perform the work, their understanding of the project as it was described in the bid spec, and no issue with delivering the services as described. And so with that, you know, and with Pete's review and blessing, feel that the lowest responsible bidders are, you know, going to be able to do the.
Right, I talked to Carrie about the electrical contract because MRB had flagged it as, hey, these guys are new, relatively new. But I don't see anything, I didn't see anything in the contract that, you know, raised a flag about responsibility under our specs. And I asked about, about the instructions for bidders, if there was something in there that was a requirement that they didn't meet, and I didn't hear back, so I was, I mean, we're good to go.
Yeah.
They're experienced electricians, they're just new as a company.
Company.
Right, because that's a pretty big.
They've spun off from other electrical companies, so they're kind of new as their own company, but.
What's new? Give me a relative, relatively speaking.
Three years, maybe. Two or three years is when they formed their LLC. But they had, I think, you know.
I think, Mark.
Twenty years of experience working as, you know.
Electricians.
Yeah, we were in another electrical company, but they decided to go on their own.
Right. I think the biggest issue we face with everything construction-related is resources, though, right? So when relatively new, that would be my concern.
We checked their bonding amount, checked to make sure they had the money.
They have the people, the resources.
Bonded to do the job, you know, as well as, you know, get the bid bond forward. So that was some of the stuff we went around with MRB to make sure.
That they've got that.
That they.
Yes.
Can you go back to, I just want to see what page was the, or where's the electrical? Are we looking at it right there?
No, that's plumbing. I apologize, here, and I'll zoom in a little bit so we can, you guys can all see, it's the last one.
Electrical's last.
Number four.
Oh, there, okay.
Is this in?
It's in the folder, yeah.
I'll look here.
Yeah.
And they were pretty close to the others. I mean, you're within a few thousand, so it wasn't like there was a major discrepancy, you know, in the bids. We always look at that as well, as somebody, did they miss something? If they're egregiously lower than everybody else, that's also, you know, questioning, did you, do you understand the full scope of the job? Is there something you missed?
You'll end up in litigation if it's.
MRB went, you know, full interview and vetting, but, you know, there was nobody that was, you know, egregiously lower drastically than everybody else.
Yes.
Okay, anything else? Want to make a motion to create a resolution?
I'll make a motion for four resolutions. For contract one, to award general construction to Whitney East in an amount not to exceed 834,000. That's to give the next administration flexibility with any of the accepted alternates. Contract number two, plumbing, to be awarded to Delta Monics, Monica's. Contract number three, to be awarded to Tactical Construction. Lastly, contract number four, to be awarded to Finger Lakes Electric.
Thanks, Candace, moving this along. All right, so admin and special inspection contracts too, or?
We do, or second?
Second, vote on that one.
Sorry, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Kevin.
Quick, quick clarification. I know it's not to exceed 834,000, rewarded to Whitney East. What, tell me one more time what the team said about those alternates, the epoxy floor finish and the picnic tables?
So those were two extra items we threw in. They seemed to come back reasonable costs, so, you know, that's why we said, let's move forward with those.
Oh, no, no, forgive me. They said the epoxy, the facility staff thought they might be able to perform that work themselves because they've done it at other project sites and thought they might be able to do it for less than was being proposed in this contract. And so that's one of the reasons they decided to put it on hold. And then same for the furniture. They feel confident that state contract pricing will be very similar, and so that could be something that gets addressed next year.
And I know you said not to, Councilwoman Lee said not to exceed, which would give that decision. I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Right.
Okay, anybody else?
Should we vote?
Yeah.
Barry?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Leanhouse?
Aye.
Ackenden?
Aye.
Taglish?
Aye.
All aye.
Okay, so along the same lines, the special admin, special inspection?
These are similar to our other projects, so for the testing of the concrete, make sure, and this one especially, so we've got two different ones we're looking to award in this one as well. The first is to foundation design. They're the only one that responded for the, we came to the board before and said, we've got to do the helical piles based on the soil conditions. So foundation design will be on-site to verify and make sure that the helical piles go in right, the foundation's done properly. We don't want our building to sink. There is another building in the area that's having some issues currently. They didn't follow that aspect. So that's not to exceed just over $4,000 in their quote. They're an hourly rate, so if we need it, we've got it. And then the other, we went out and we got two respondents, and that's for like the concrete testing, that's for the soil compaction testing, that's for, you know, other special testing that goes as part of the project. We got two respondents. Terricon was the lowest of that, so we got, I think we actually got three, I think we had CME, I think we had NCONs.
And, yes.
NCOs, and then Terricon was the low quote on that one.
And I'll just note for the, for the contract for foundation design, it doesn't exceed the limit, it doesn't rise the need for town board approval for that one in particular because it's under 10,000. So a resolution isn't needed. We're sharing that with you just because it's part of the project and wanted you to understand the full scope of what we're doing. So you wouldn't need to approve, authorize that one.
I don't remember if this.
What they do is unique. It's like the only game in town, right?
Yeah, it's similar to like CMI, the ones that do the helical piles. They're, they actually bid on the project, but they're the sub to Whitney East, you know, they're kind of one of the only people that do that kind of work, so.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, that's under it as well, so actually.
Yeah, both of these, it's more of, yeah, we probably could have put this under informational, sorry. We got excited because it's.
We don't need to form a resolution, but just wanted to show the board the full cost of what's going on in the contracts we'd look to award. Again, that's under the 10,000, so.
Wait a minute, you said something, though, that they're a subcontractor on the project?
They're not.
I'm sorry, I was just referring to CMI. They're the ones doing the helical piles. They're a sub to Whitney East, so they're included in Whitney East's price.
Okay.
So no, I actually need it, need it from us?
Yeah, sorry, that could have been an informational item, my apologies.
No, that's fine. Okay, any thoughts on this? No?
Yeah, where did we put that one?
It's in there.
I think we said it was under this one.
Yeah, the last item.
And I apologize.
I think Mark and I.
I think we buried it under the construction admin quote right there.
Okay.
While you look, did you have it, look that up, an email we could pull up. The other part is, we got a quote from MRB to do the construction admin, so similar to, we've got others, Krista Construction doing the construction administration, the Smithills, same at the Clark House, same at the DPW. That one, our apologies, we didn't put that in the folder, but that one, Carrie's pulling that up. So we did get a quote for them to go out there and they get the pay apps in, do the inspections on that. They handle all the questions from the contractors, they handle all of that stuff. It passes through staff, passes through, obviously, the board for, you know, payment authorization, but Carrie's pulling that up. We did get a quote from them for that.
Yes, I'm so sorry, this is taking me much longer than it normally would.
And maybe while you're pulling that up, if the board, we can table it and just come back to it later in the agenda, if, give you a minute. I've got a couple of easy ones coming up.
Oh, yes, okay, that'd be lovely.
Give you a minute, you're not under the gun.
Do the easement for the sidewalks?
Do the easements, yeah. So I have two different easement abandonments that were in the drop. So these are, the one is on the corner of Plank and Jackson, and the other one is on Jackson. We've negotiated new easements, they already signed with the homeowners. So based on the location, we have the existing easement and it was well into their property. It would take out a lot of their trees. It really wasn't needed there. So we negotiated new easements, had new map descriptions done. They have already signed those. So we're just looking tonight for the board to authorize to abandon the old easements. So they're in the file, or a portion of the easement. The new easements will be filed, but just looking to see if the board's okay with the banning the old ones. They're no longer needed since we have new easements in hand. So there was two. There's one for, I think, 1099 Plank Road, and then there's a new business resolution tonight. If the board is comfortable with that, we can, you know, move ahead with that. And the other was 1387 Jackson, if I have my numbers right in my head.
And 1401 Scribner.
That'll be the next item up. That's item E on the.
Oh, this is sidewalk sewer, excuse me.
Yep, that's a sewer.
Yep, yep, yep.
Scribner and Jackson?
There's, yeah, it was 1387 Jackson, and then there was 1099 Plank Road, were two different easements, so they were.
The plank road one.
Um.
Here, I'll pull it up for you.
Tell me to jump in there if you're chicken, you're.
Yeah, do you want to?
I can.
We'll switch.
Yep.
This one was in my box, printed out, 1099 Plank Road.
Yeah.
155, resolution 155.
Yes, 155.
Oh, sewer easement. I thought plank road was the sidewalk.
Plank Road is sidewalk, yes. There's a Scribner Road sewer one, it'll be item E on our agenda, so that's the next one, but.
What do you say? So I think this is the conclusion, is they say.
Sidewalk sewer.
Portion of a sidewalk sewer easement?
Oh.
It should just be sidewalk.
Should be a sidewalk easement, yeah.
So those resolutions should be amended before they're adopted, so it's clear.
Okay.
That's what now is so confusing.
Sorry for the confusion.
That would be good.
So 155 and 156.
156, both sides.
Just strike the sewer piece on the.
Name of the resolution.
Marco initial on that, right?
Yeah.
And then the Scribner one is a sewer.
And if you want to, if you want to clean them up, we can do it on December 3rd, if you prefer that, that there's not a hurry for these tonight. It was just, if it's a matter of ease, but if it's better just to clean them up, we'll do it.
It's just the title. I don't think anyone, yeah.
Yeah, I just.
Paper copy.
Okay, whatever the board wants to do, there's not, there's not a rush. We have the new easement. This was just a paperwork, you know, clean it up, abandon the old one.
Like I said, just cross it and then you initial it, Mark, and.
You can do that. So if the board's good with the abandonment, we should do a roll call vote on the abandonment of that easement, or those two easements, if the board's comfortable.
Thoughts, questions? Linda?
I'm just, oh, the amendment of it?
Well, one, the amendment, and two, if the board's comfortable with abandoning those.
Amendment, just, you can, a motion to approve the resolution as amended.
Okay, yeah.
For each one.
So that's your motion?
155, you want 155 motion to approve it as amended. Taglish moves.
As moved.
All right, so moved.
So moved.
Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Thanks, Bob. Okay, vote, please.
Barry?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Leanhouse?
Aye.
Ackenden?
Aye.
Taglish?
Aye.
And is that the same for both of the?
We'll do a separate one for 156 as amended.
Okay.
Okay, do I have a motion for 156?
I'll move 156 as amended.
Thank you.
I'll second.
And vote, is Barry?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Leanhouse?
Aye.
Ackenden?
Aye.
Taglish?
Aye.
Oh, aye.
Okay.
Good thing I don't have 156.
So where would you like to go, Carrie and Mark, Carrie, you want to go back or forward?
We can go, I do have the letter.
Okay.
This is for construction admin, are we going to go back to that now? Apologize.
Sure, that's fine.
That took forever to find.
No, you're good.
Good thing you caught it.
So the oversight for this type of a project is a little bit more involved with respect to the, specifically with the foundation, a little bit more, there's going to be a lot more onsite visits, and it's also a tight site with respect to making sure that contractors are, you know, keeping and maintaining the, the public access while construction's happening, because construction timeframe will overlap with the time where this park will want to be used.
It's fishing and boating season.
And so it's going to be, will require a little bit more handholding, and also it's an offsite location, so it's really important to have eyes on it pretty regularly, and so MRB put together a construction administration proposal that reflects that additional sort of extra look. It's still within the, sort of the, I guess, sort of accepted or standard percentage of the overall construction, and I'll just zoom to the bottom, and I do apologize, I'll make sure we put this in the folder as well, that it's, it provides a, did I miss the...
I don't think there's some, because they had the one quote there, there's some fee and then the...
Yeah, this is the lump sum, and then there's additional services that are, with respect to construction observation, that's an hourly, and then the, these are going to be hourly and up to a max amount, it's for construction observation, and then for, we've got, this project is funded by DOS, Department of State, and there's an MB, minority and women business owned goal, and there's reporting associated with that, and so from each of the contractors, we're going to need additional reporting, and then MRB is offering the service to help us with that reporting requirement, to make sure that we're being compliant with our state funding guidelines. Because it's hard to know how much detail we need from them, they thought it'd be better to provide a lump sum, but it would be only billed if and as needed. So these are sort of what I would call add-on and if-needed charges. The lump sum construction administration is this figure right here, the 89,900, it's less than 10% of the value of the construction, in most cases, it hovers somewhere between...
10 and 15.
10 and 15. And then the other services they've identified, we wouldn't need to take them up on those offers, they just provided to say that they're available to do it if needed.
I know the reporting, just with the MWBEs, there's a lot to it, and it's important.
And I failed to mention it before in our previous discussion, but I'm very, was very pleased with the responses, because we're close to if not exceeding our target for the state, and that's very challenging to do on construction projects, so I appreciate the, and we, we made a great effort to get the word out that, so in...
How many different firms did you email?
So in addition to putting on Contract Reporter, which automatically gets picked up by everyone in, throughout New York State, we sent out over, I think, 200 emails to anyone that was listed as an MWBE within 100 miles of our location, and so that really helps to get the word out, and folks will then contact locals to try to figure out who's going after it, so they can be a sub on the project.
That'll be documented to show if we didn't meet our goal, what methods and means did we do to try to meet the goal if we, if we didn't, and how did we have outreach and everything else, we've been documenting, and Carrie's been handling all, you know, that documentation and who we outreach and how many we sent to make sure that we meet the goal, or at least document we've, we've made our best effort if we can.
Right.
But I think, based on the way the numbers come in, I think we should be all set.
Yeah.
Yeah, great. Any questions?
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to move that so quickly.
Any thoughts, Linda? Ready to move forward? Is this something you're ready to do today, or this would be the ledge meeting beginning December?
We can, we'd have a prepared, a resolution for the town board to act on the 3rd, so this would be one of the, this would be another resolution for that same night, similar to other past capital improvements, we'll have the four contracts for the actual construction, and then we'll have the separate resolution for the contract for construction admin.
Great. All right, who wants to kick this off? Any takers? Bob?
This has reached my not reading ahead of time limit, so...
No, that's fine.
I won't make the, yeah.
I mean, we can prepare the resolution and you'll have time to...
That's fair.
Yeah.
To take a look at it ahead of time, and then if you have questions, please, you know, reach out, we can answer those ahead of, she'll have, you know, some additional time for review ahead of the December 3rd meeting.
Well, something scary comes out of it, we could pull it from the December 3rd, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Is that a motion, Bob?
If you want to do a motion to, to prepare the resolution.
For a resolution for December 3rd?
Yeah.
Sure.
Thank you, thank you, Bob, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Kevin. Vote please, Sue.
Barry?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Leanhouse?
Aye.
Ackenden?
Aye.
Taglish?
Thank you, all right.
Aye, she didn't vote, okay.
Sorry. Okay, where are we now?
Back to item E.
Yeah.
So Carrie's got a little graphic, so this one popped up, the new owners of 1401 Scribner Road are looking at some modifications of the property, did a research, of course, might want to pull over, and showed there's an easement that was filed back in, I think, 1970, it was a sanitary sewer easement that goes through the middle of this property, and if we ever get the graphic up, it shows it goes through actually existing homes, so it's an easement that I'm surprised it hasn't come up earlier, why it wasn't, so it's the highlighted purply blue piece in the middle, so this shows our easements in the area, we've got this random 1970 sanitary sewer that I think was just granted in that area, it runs through people's homes and houses, there is no sanitary sewer in that easement.
Somebody did a good job looking at those abstracts.
That's, so I say, how is it not pulled up when an attorney did an abstract review of those homes previously?
Exactly.
So this one is kind of just a cleanup of an easement that we're not using, there is no sewer in it, so it's just in it, so it came up with 1401, that's the one on the far right, and they're looking at their piece, but 7 Walnut Hill, 8 Walnut Hill, it runs through the middle of their house, so we don't have a sanitary sewer in their house, so it was just...
So this is just a bad map, is that what you're...
It was an old easement.
It was an easement that was granted way back in the day for whatever reason.
And it was never put in?
Yeah, it was never utilized, there's no sewer pipe in it, so it's just a matter of a cleanup, so if the board just is good with abandoning this easement, it's...
My guess is there's some street that was anticipated that never got built, and so easements were filed, but nothing was ever built.
Well, it, it should have come up as part of what, when that neighborhood was developed, right?
Right, right.
So...
The reason I'm, I'm wondering is because I remember we had a resident who, oh, it's been several years, but was very angry because she was told she was on a sewer connection, or not on a sewer connection. And, hm? Yeah, I don't remember the, the specifics of it, but was trying to get that resolved of, I'm not on a sewer, or I am on a sewer, and I'm wondering if, these are part of the reasons.
Yeah, so the neighborhood is sewered, so people are served off of other locations.
Just not there.
Just not, there's no pipe in that easement.
Right.
Yeah. So if the board's okay, comfortable abandoning this.
We, we have no sewer there, homes are already built there, we're obviously not going to, right?
Put a sewer there in future.
There is not going to happen, so I, I think really for clerical purposes, and really to, to respect their property rights, we, we have to release the sewer easement, so in keeping with the other resolutions that, that we adopted, procedure, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, this one's already written up.
We have a new business item tonight, if the board wants to entertain that, so we can...
During the legislative session.
Yes, if you just want to vote.
We already did the other two during work sessions, so it doesn't really, it's kind of form over substance to keep them in work session or legislative session, but if you want to wait, you can wait, if you want to do it now, while you're talking about it, I don't have a problem.
I, I was just going to follow Linda's lead to just tackle it now, you know, like the other two resolutions that we had, so I'd like to move for the...
It's like form over substance really, that go out and come back, maybe we don't have to go back in legislative.
Oh, you do though, because there's items that were on the legislative, sorry.
There's some other ones, but this one we can do now if you're good.
Okay.
Cool, so I can't be as efficient as Linda, in that case, I'm going to...
No, it's, I'm not, I'm not opposing it, I'm just...
All right, guys, I'm trying to make a resolution here, so, I'm going to make...
Take care of it now, that's what I would do.
All right, I'm just going to do whatever you guys want at this point, what do you want to do?
Make a motion.
Adopt it, or...
Approve the resolution.
It's written up, so are we making, we just have to make a motion to approve it.
Yeah.
Sounds good, I'll second that, Linda.
Is that correct?
Yeah, 157.
Great, second, moved by Linda, seconded by Lee, let's go.
You good? Okay.
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Leanhouse?
Aye.
Ackenden?
Aye.
Taglish?
Aye.
Oh, aye.
Thank you, board.
Okay. 1225 Fairport, nine miles, is that where we're at?
Yep.
Okay.
So this is, there's two homes that are kind of surrounded by the Abington development, they were not included, and I do have another little graphic that was in...
Just going to take a moment to load.
Take a moment to load, so this, they have requested out-of-district sewer agreement, so they would like to connect into the sanitary sewer that's in Abington. The sewer was stubbed to their parcels that's in there, it actually came up in 2023, this board, past board members of it, so now you can see 1221, 1225, the non-highlighted areas are two homes that are outside of the sewer district right now. The stub, the purple line goes between the two lots, the developer was required to put it in, they didn't want to be in the sewer district before, so it wasn't like they were excluded, if they're in the sewer district, you start paying operation and maintenance, and you're also paying debt service, so they did not want to be included, they were asked originally, now they have failing septic systems, they want to be included in the sewer district, so they're asking this board to be not a district user, if the board approves it, they are working on a map to show how they're going to connect to that sewer line, they've got to add a manhole at the end, and then they've got to grant an easement between, it's a mother and daughter, they've got to grant an easement, 1225 has to grant an easement to 1221, they won't always own it, so they've got a legal right through 1225 to 1221 to get access to the sewer. The board did approve that in 2023, they never submitted all the paperwork and information that was needed to recreate it, so I just thought it would make more sense to come back to this board, reformalize that approval, then we'll, you know, once they submit their map, then we've got to do the description of the easement, then I create the district, they've got to sign it, supervisor signs it, so I'm just coming back to reiterate or have the board reapprove that out-of-district user agreement that was already done, and then if the paperwork's prepared, then we'll, we'll add them in. Sorry, a lot of words.
Any questions, thoughts?
Looking for a motion to reapprove? I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, vote please.
Barry?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Leanhouse?
Aye.
Ackenden?
Aye.
Taglish?
Aye.
Oh, aye.
Okay, Climate Action Plan Consultant.
So this was another one we put out in RFP4, we've come before this board and shared that the RFP was going out, I believe we received, received 16 or 17 responses, so we've done amazing with our responses to our RFQs, RFPs, so this was a request for the qualifications, we got 16 responses, 17 responses back, pared that down to the top four that were interviewed.
Wow.
So we did interviews, again, with a wide breadth of, of staff on it, facilities, parks, DPW, Carrie and I, as well as engineering and planning staff, and then again, after going through the qualifications, looking at, we basically told them the amount of money we had, that the board had allocated $100,000 through the ARPA funds for this, so we kind of told them what our cost was, they came in with their proposals for it. At the end of our review, the, the committee was unanimous that Collier's Engineering and Design was the consultant that is preferred, that we're putting forth to the board to consider.
They didn't all come in and add $100,000 each, or?
Somewhere like 98, 9, whatever, we basically said we've got $100,000 to spend. So they all came in, you know, pretty close, or found ways to, you know, add up to $100,000 for that.
And this is Phase 1, which for the, for the viewing public is government operations, so it's town facilities, town operations is the focus of Phase 1, subsequent phases of a climate action plan would look outward and into the community, that's not, that's not included in the scope of this work, it's solely focused on the operations, government operations, and...
Yeah, looking at our facilities, looking at our fleet, looking at, you know, areas of what evaluation of our existing greenhouse gas.
Yes.
Inventory, you know, and then coming back with recommendations on how we can reduce, you know, what our, our carbon footprint is.
I gotta believe the county went through this process too, and, yeah.
Yeah, I believe Collier's was involved in that process with the county.
Did you have like a little matrix table for these?
Not for, I don't think we have one, do we have a matrix, did Sarah? Forgive me, I'll take a peek.
At least for the four that was left.
Yeah, we, so we had, you know, four firms that we did interview for it, we got proposals from all over the country, we had companies from California, Seattle, Washington, you know, that, that had proposed. So again, this one, we're looking to close it out in this calendar year, as the board had allocated funds in this calendar year for it, so, you know, we'd like to work, you know, with finance to encumber that money, so again, those funds can be allocated in 2026, you know, if the board's, you know, looking to move forward, we can use that, those funds to, you know, fund that project.
I don't, it wasn't in the drop.
I think you can at least bring up the companies in that.
Yeah. Over here, you mean? Okay.
Sarah did, I think she had her summary page there, and I, my apologies, there's the memo, but there's the company, so we did interview Barton LeJudas, Collier's Engineering, KLA, or Kim Lundgren, and Labella Associates were the four that we interviewed, but we had 16, or 17 that, that submitted under that RFQ.
And, and remind me, this has got to be under contract by the end of the year per ARPA, or no?
We'd like to, yes, I mean, it's not per ARPA, but just to, you know, we can, you know, again, use those 2025 funds, you know, towards...
That were allocated.
That were allocated for it.
Gotcha. Okay. Any questions? Yeah, great job to go through all those.
There's been a lot of interviews lately.
Yeah.
Between all the different projects and teams, and everybody that's running those has done a great job of getting a wide cross-section of staff on different people from different departments, just so it's not the two of us deciding, it's, again, it was unanimous across the group, but Bob and his, his group and team were there, so again, trying to make sure that all departments that will be involved and affected, DPW especially, as we're doing the greenhouse gas inventory, a lot of the stuff is looking at our fleets, how many miles per gallon do you get, you know, what, you know, what aging equipment's out there, they can look at different ways that we can, you know, get rid of aging equipment, bring in newer stuff, get better gas mileage, look at, you know, alternative fuel sources, different, you know, vehicle types to, you know, improve our greenhouse.
Nope, that's a different one, yeah, sorry. I don't think we, I don't know if, I can't put my hand on it, I apologize.
Okay.
But I think just, there is a, a matrix that was used to get to the top five to interview, did we, I don't, I think we discussed as a group, and everybody came to the unanimous decision at the conclusion of the interviews.
Yeah.
And so there wasn't a ranking, it was more of a selection of Colliers being the firm to select out of the four that were interviewed. And is that, that's my, my recollection of it, yeah.
Okay, any questions? So you need a motion for resolution. Do you have one prepared today?
There was a new business resolution, again, didn't want to be presumptive, but if the board was good with it. We have one if the board, again, wants a little soak time, you know, we can prepare it or have it ready for December 3rd. So we're, we're good either way.
Ready, Kevin, Linda?
You have one prepared.
We do.
Yeah, I'm not ready to vote to approve today.
Okay, then.
Okay, then there's no action needed, or do we have to vote for you to create what you already created?
Given, given Linda's reservations today, I'm going to move to table.
Okay.
Okay, and then we'll have it ready for December 3rd. And again, in the meantime, if the board has questions or stuff we can answer.
I appreciate that.
We can provide whatever information you're looking for.
Okay, Campus Facilities Public Engagement.
So the, forgive me for a moment, I'm going to. So for the Campus Facilities Public Engagement, the, received seven qualifications packet. I think I mentioned that at a previous work session or two. A multi-staff member, multi-department team was assembled to conduct interviews with the top three. The, the top three in this instance were, and I'm having to keep everybody straight because from project to project, there's a little bit of overlap. But MRB Group, Highland Planning, and Barton and La Judas. At the conclusion of the interviews, a resounding unanimous in favor of Barton and La Judas. I do have a summary, I believe I have a summary table of that. But Barton La Judas was the preferred vendor for the services. And that was something that the library, recreation, courts, multiple staff members from town hall were all participating in those interviews. And it was really interesting to get to the end and find everybody in 100% agreement with no discussion needed. And so bear with me for a moment.
And again, all qualified groups, great communicators. I think Barton La Judas floated to the top as they can handle the communication, but also have the engineering and architectural backing. So as we get into the, you know, looking at facilities and everything else, they can prepare, you know, additional documents and have, you know, different, you know, additional materials that they can, you know, provide as we get into that and start to, you know, find out what the public wants. So we've done our initial assessment of, you know, kind of staff's thoughts on, you know, what our facilities need. The next step is reaching out to the public, you know, asking our residents what they want to see and need. What do you want for, you know, a rec facility? What would you like to see for the library? What do you want to see, you know, in our community? And then also, you know, they did some cost, let's say cost benefit, but some cost, not everything can be afforded. But, you know, they had some, you know, neat opportunities that you, you know, people can weigh the costs of what things are. And, you know, how do you, you know, how do you spend the dollars that you have to get what really is the community's top choice and interest, so.
Any thoughts? I know everybody, Rhonda, Andy, Courts.
Yeah, Rhonda, sitting on it, Andy from Recreation, Elise from the Courts, sitting on it. So again, this one, we want even wider to make sure that, you know, the library, recreation, town hall. Obviously, we're moving forward with the DPW construction right now. But as we're looking at the remainder of our facilities, you know, again, staff has shared what we see facilities involved. What do we see as facility needs and upgrades in the next couple of years? You know, now we need to take that next step and see what the public would like to see and, you know, where they want to go and how much they're willing to spend.
Would you do me a favor? And for people watching or people who watch us later, just provide a summary of what the output is going to come. Regardless of who we select, what will the town, what will residents see? What's the output?
So they would do, and then have their proposal, but they can, you know, would do several public information meetings. They'd have website, you know, options, people can put their comments in. They would, you know, gather that up, they'd prepare some sketches of what the different facilities could look like based on the public's input. You know, and then from that, we can look at, you know, what some rough costs are of, you know, what those facilities would be. So this hopefully prepares a document and information that the town board can then take forward saying, okay, this is everything the community wants. Here's what that might cost. You know, is that something we want to put on a, you know, a ballot sometime in the future that the public could vote on and say, yes, we want all these amenities? Obviously, there's a cost that comes with that, that, you know, they would be prepared, you know, visual documents that show, here's what those facilities would look like, here's where they could sit. You know, the public would vote on it. If they're supportive of it, we obviously then need to get into final design plans. And these wouldn't be construction documents, but this is just kind of getting the community's temperature on what they're looking for.
So.
Go ahead, no, please go ahead.
So like the Climate Action Plan, right? These projects with transportation, housing and development and the Town Facilities program, we've been talking about it for almost a year, I want to say, right? And, and trying to figure out future of library, future of recreation campus, future of the courts and these things. We need to be able to engage not only our internal stakeholders, but external as well. And because we don't have the capacity or bandwidth, a lot of these went out. And with this one, they're doing both online engagement with residents, community, greater Rochester area, in-person engagement. They're doing the polling, compiling of all that data, and then making the, representing to the board at a later date. In line also with the comprehensive plan. So, thanks Carrie. So, I mean, they're, I think we've finally gotten here after a year, right? And then you're going to have to think of where to put or renovate or build existing where they are. So it's just to get the data for the board to make a decision. So, I mean, I'm trying to reserve comments myself, right? But I feel very strongly about the Climate Action Plan as well as this facilities engagement process. Would like to see them come to some fruition or at least a start by the end of the year so that, right? You can compile it and continue to move forward. You know, I want to be respectful of people, everybody having a chance to read, but.
The question wasn't what are they doing, because that's very clear. The question was simply, it wasn't even a question, it was for our residents summarizing what do we get? We understand there'll be public information, but what will their output be? And I think you shared it, it's, it's here is what the feedback that we got when it comes to a recreation, recreation center. We pulled everything together and this is what our residents are looking at when it comes to a library. This is what they're looking at. We can then take what they give us, they'll also give us high level costs, is that a true statement?
Yep.
Okay, so they, they will give us high level costs and then we can determine next moves. Yeah, so that's what I was trying to get at, just what do we get? What type of report and what can we do with that report?
Yep, so that would give us, you know, when we've got some initial costs based on what staff's was done, we've had a construction company look at that. So trying for, you know, real numbers, these are not, won't be design plans at the end of this. But obviously, once the board says, yes, we'd like to move ahead with the new recreation facility, yes, we'd like to renovate the library. No, we want two new buildings, you know, give the board as much information to then, you know, make decisions. And then if we want to put it on a ballot for the public to vote saying it's going to be X million dollars for all these things that you want, make sure that's, you know, what the public wants. But we could have some visual graphics of what those buildings might look like. Here's the costs around that. The public says, yes, we're in favor, let's move forward. You know, we would then need to take the next step of getting to an actual final design plans and, you know, final layout. But this is kind of the next step and evolution of where we're looking to take it.
Thank you.
So I guess, again, for a work session, right? There are two big items. The first, the other one's already tabled, but for this one, because it's going to be a budget amendment from the unassigned fund. And it, you know, it's $33,000. Do you guys want to act on it today or table it as well?
Or I can prepare a resolution for the December 3rd legislative session? Either would be okay. I do have a new business item for you tonight if you wanted to move forward.
I'm good moving forward with this one.
Yeah, then one comment I want to make. Someone might say, why are we doing all these things at once? But they're all so important to do together because they are intertwined, right? The residential, the housing study, the transportation plan, the facilities improvement, the climate action, all this will come together.
They're all going to lend for each, for each other, they're going to be contributing. There's, there's definitely a lot of overlap in some of the topics and issues for sure.
Yeah, so it'll be exciting. Hopefully this coming year, the board will get the feedback and get the input they need to make a decision to move forward. So I think it's great. Okay?
So I would make a motion that we vote on, oh, there's no number to it, 25T.
Probably going to be.
157?
Would it be 158 or 159?
It'll be 159.
I think it's 159. 158 was tabled.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thanks Candace. Sue, vote, when you get a minute?
Barry.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Lee House.
Hi.
Ackenden.
Aye.
Tecklisch.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Conference attendance policy, Carrie.
Okay, so this is one that we, staff from finance and various departments have been talking about. And for one reason or another, we've never brought it to the town board. The policy as it is currently written or procedure requires any attendance at any conference that's outside of a geographic area of like Monroe County or the Finger Lakes has to get, obtain town board approval. However, after the conclusion of the budget cycle, it occurs to all of us that any time there's going to be attendance at a, at a conference, that's always anticipated and included in individual department budgets. And so having to come to town board to get approval with the timing of meetings and sometimes the information or timing of registration for conferences, it felt like the request for town board approval should be more tied to budgetary items or issues. So that if a conference is included in a budget, it doesn't really matter where it's located because that's been factored into the cost of the, attending the conference as part of the budget cycle. So rather than location or geography be the dictator of town board approval, that a conference that was not included in a budget come to the town board for approval. Or if the, the budget or the conference cost exceeds what the town department anticipated and needs to adjust their budget, that again, the budget be the driver for coming to town board for approval. It just, it's a, we didn't understand why the geography mattered if the town department has already accounted for the location as part of calculating the cost of attending.
If you made the change though, I would want it to be like maybe approved by the supervisor or something.
It is, there's, there's a step for once approved by supervisor.
Right.
Shit, it is already, we submit our conference request form, it goes down to the comptroller, department head signs off, comptroller signs off, supervisor signs off. So it's not a.
No one's allowed to leave the building without everybody knowing it.
Just decides on their own to go. So there are other steps in place, but that out of town, and I know we've enumerated or I've enumerated in my priorities and goals, the conferences I'm looking to attend through the year, and the board goes through those, reviews those, you know, so the board.
Not to make it complicated, you could do it if it was out of state, maybe that'd be different. But most of them, I mean, there's been one Geneva, Syracuse, Buffalo, I mean.
I was going to say, like, at the, for planning, there's the National Planning Conference. So if we were ever to be a presenter or something to that effect, they can be, you know, again, you'd only go if it made sense, but.
Yeah, I get that. It makes sense to, it's budgetary.
Yeah.
I'm okay with the proposed changes, but you know, there are some town staff that have attended conferences out of the county and we're not necessarily good representatives of the town, right? In violations of certain vehicle use policies. And so something like that, I would always want the board to have discretion over. I understand the approval process with the budget. And I understand at least the supervisor would always have oversight of approval. But when there are reputational risks to the town or to the town board or poor reflection of the town, I feel like the board should always be made aware. So I am okay again with, with the changes. But I would caution the future board and the future supervisor that if there are these reputational risks, that the policy be reconsidered.
Okay. So sorry, what do you need from us specifically? Resolution?
Would it be, I think we don't need a resolution, this is just a standard, like a, and almost a procedure, it's a process.
Is it part of the?
I would prefer a resolution.
Oh, then if the town attorney prefers a resolution, we will get a resolution. I can prepare a resolution for the third.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, vote please.
Barry.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Lee House.
Hi.
Ackenden.
Aye.
Tecklisch.
Aye.
All aye.
Okay, thank you. Have a couple informational items?
We're just going to give, we can just give quick updates to let you know that DPW project continues to move along. The Altheus Clark House looks great. Construction is coming along beautifully. Installation is happening right now. You've seen the windows and siding.
The chimney.
The chimney looks ver, the stonework looks good. And that will continue on the inside once installation is happening. There's just a lot of moving parts, the pavement, the curbing. Some of the, the access doors are in, the store, main storefront windows or main storefront doors are on their way in a few weeks. Really is coming along. And so at some point, when it's not, not a complete hazard, we will certainly have folks come through and get to take a little, a sneak peek. But it's coming along very nicely. And so very exciting to watch that project come out of the ground and, and continue to be underway.
Yeah.
Great.
Props to the Historic Preservation Committee as well, who helped pick the siding.
Yep.
And Bob, I don't know if you remember when Linda Cole had like her vision board for the materials as well, it looks really nice.
Yes, so, all good things.
Less exciting, the Ready project sewer pump station is completed.
Great.
No, not. We already have our grant funding back as well, more exciting. $110,000 check was received yesterday, so that's good money back. Sidewalks on Five Mile Line, the lower section are completed. Unfortunately, we're running out of weather, but those will continue on Plank and Jackson come spring, summer of next year. We may have some tree work going on on Jackson Road. Just waiting for, you know, one last confirmation of an easement. So we may still see some tree work that can continue through the winter, given the weather. And then the Willow Pond drainage, we are digging and we've sent out postcards to the people immediately surrounding it. This is a cooperative project with the town of Perrington. So we have the equipment to dig the drainage way. So we're doing that, Perrington is hauling the materials away. So it was a cooperative, you know, job between two towns to hopefully see some drainage improvements and hopefully mitigate some of the sulfur smells that so many of our residents have been experiencing in that area. So we're hopeful that this project will help with that. It is a limited scope, but that's based on it being a wetland. So we went through all the process of wetland with the DEC and Army Corps, we have all the permits. But it's a little less scope than what we had hoped, but hopefully it will still achieve the same outcome as what we're hoping for.
Thank you, just one question, because I thought about it, I even noticed, but is the generator in for the Ready for the pump station?
It is, they're, they're waiting for the final connection and the startup on that, but the generator is in place onsite, the railing's in for the, the pump station.
So it'll get all cleaned up.
It's just got to have the, the final startup on that, but then that'll be one more generator that's now in place and operational on our pump stations.
That's great. And I added my notes, anything on active transportation new or?
Yep, so that's the next item. So if any other updates on projects the board wants. So active transportation is our informational item. We continue to work with our consultant on that. They shared some pretty neat information on the trail cams. So they put out in several locations around the town just to see how pedestrians are using sidewalks, where they're using the walkways, you know, where we may need to install sidewalks, crosswalks, as well as bikers. It was pretty neat information that they could extrapolate out of these trail cameras for that. They will be back next to present at the January 20th Transportation Committee. So back to present to that group, they'll have another public hearing, I think in February.
It's going to be a community workshop. We're looking at, it's more of an open house style where they'll have information and boards. It'll be sort of an open-ended time. And we're looking at likely hosting it at the community center so that you can capture, you know, folks who are there to come to that event, but also then folks who just happen to be at the community center or the library will have the benefit of being able to walk by and see what's happening with active transportation, provide feedback. We'll also invite them to a future town board work session to provide a sort of summary overview of what's been presented to the Transportation Committee as well.
Say we already talked with them about, there's some transportation grants.
Yep.
Also talking about some grant opportunities coming out of this. Can we already start to leverage this into, you know, other connections for sidewalks, multimodal pathways?
And we're pretty confident that we'll have enough of a draft document assembled by the time some of these grant. Forgive me, my watch is telling me what time it is, I'm so sorry. So we're going to be working with them to identify some viable grant opportunities and pursue them even before we're finished with the plan.
That's great, this comes up occasionally, and I think I know the answer, but nothing on Brown Croft Boulevard from DOT and their plan or?
They are releasing the plans, they've held the plans, I've asked several times, I think January 8th, if I'm remembering the date right. They are releasing them, they've not, said we're not making them public before that.
Okay.
But January 8th, they're releasing it for bid out to the contractors. And then they're looking at the construction starting next summer, fall. And I think that continues into 2027, but I've. And I think it continues into 2027, but I've continued to ask, I have residents that ask. They've held them and they said, you know, once they're released out for the contractors, you know, we'll be glad to share with the town. Once we have that, obviously, we can put it up on the website and share with our residents as well.
They can't give the potential contractors an early sneak peek through the town, sharing it early, so they have to keep it under, under lock and key until it's ready to be released.
Yeah, once it's released, then, you know, we can share it and make it available for our residents.
Okay. Thank you, Mark, Carrie, both of you. All right, anything else that we're missing? Okay, well, we can adjourn this meeting. Our next work session is Wednesday, December 17th. I'll call this meeting adjourned at 8:20. And we're going to move right back into a legislative meeting. We'll pick up with any additions or deletions and I think we added, did we add a couple, I believe?
I think we worked through, I think we worked through the new business ones, but we still had a couple of the resolutions to vote on if the board was ready.
I'll let Sue go ahead with the new ones or the, what's on the docket?
The minutes first.
Yes, we can.
October 29.
Yeah, thank you.
Make a motion to approve the minutes, October 29.
I'll second.
Vote please.
Oh, Barry?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Leanhouse?
Aye.
Ackenden?
I'll abstain, I missed that meeting.
Teklish?
Aye.
Okay.
And then we have petition with 121 signatures requesting a stop sign at the corner of Brentwood and Willowhurst Drive. I think you are, you already have that.
Okay.
Resolutions? Authorization for supervisor to sign a license and hold harmless agreement to allow a fence in a storm sewer easement at 1 Cali Ridge.
Moved as written.
Second.
Barry?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Leanhouse?
Aye.
Ackenden?
Aye.
Teklish?
Aye.
Adoption of the town of Penfield, 2026 fee schedule for various departments and applications.
Moved as written.
Second.
Barry?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Leanhouse?
Aye.
Ackenden?
Aye.
Teklish?
Aye.
Authorization for supervisor to sign a license and hold harmless agreement to allow a shed in a storm sewer easement at 1087 Wayland Road.
Moved as written.
Second.
Barry?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Leanhouse?
Aye.
Ackenden?
Aye.
Teklish?
Aye.
Roadway dedications for 2025.
Moved as written.
Second.
Barry?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Leanhouse?
Aye.
Ackenden?
Aye.
Teklish?
Aye.
The others we had already voted on.
Does the, the name on 25T 154 need to be changed? Is that a just amendment? I think that was Public Works, Bob.
It's because it's coming, it's, it's under Councilwoman Lee, but it's Public Works, so.
I see it.
But Bob can speak for me any day of the week.
Okay, and the new business we already voted on?
No, it's, it's tabled. 158 is tabled.
Right.
Let me clarify that and make sure it was second on the motion to table and to vote on that so it's clear in the record that that is tabled.
Okay.
So there'd be a second on the.
So we tabled, correct?
Yes, I tabled.